We're gonna go ahead and get started. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could make one change before we approve the agenda, I would like to replace C, project updates, with transfar. I'll explain that as we get down there.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including meeting agenda, August financial fund balance statement, minutes of the September 20 regular meeting, and October 10 special meeting, update substitute teacher and sub bus driver listing, payment of monthly bills, excluding payments to Larry Benson, Jeff Ellison, and Janelle Embry. Mark makes a motion, have a second? A little seconds, all those in favor? Kerry's a six oh. We'll do the rest of them here in two different motions. So I need a motion to approve payments to Larry Benson and Jeff Ellison. Troy makes a motion. Michael seconds, all those in favor? Kerry, four four, 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 and two against, myself, and Mr. Strong.
Erstang, sorry.
Next, we'll have a motion to approve payments to Janelle Embry. What other motions we got? Troy makes a motion, I have a second. Mark makes a second, all those in favor? Kerry's a five oh with one extension, Michael. Next, we'll go into the MSBA monthly bulletin.
Hello everyone and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association Board Report for the month of October. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the recent 2018 MSBA Annual Conference, where nearly 1,300 school board members and administrators gathered to improve their leadership skills. Board members and administrators had the opportunity to attend more than 130 breakout sessions and workshops, presented mostly by leaders from school districts throughout the state. One of the keynote speakers at the conference this year was former U.S. Senator and professional basketball star Bill Bradley, a graduate of Crystal City High School near St. Louis. Senator Bradley said he believes our public schools need to place an even stronger emphasis on teaching the history and practice of our democracy. He said it will be up to our young people to shape the future of our democracy, if they choose to do so.
And that's where I think our education system is so important. To be able to talk about, well, what is our government? How does it work? What has it done over years? What has it done? What has our democracy done to try to create and successfully create these high living standards or life expectancy or literacy rates? What was it in our history that led us to where we are now? And if you want to shape your future, then you need to get busy doing the necessary work of a citizen. Not simply the rights of citizenship, but the responsibilities of citizenship, which I think fundamentally is voting in this country.
MSBA presented Senator Bradley with the 2018 Outstanding Graduate of Missouri's Public Schools Award, following his remarks. Those attending the annual conference also had a chance to hear from members of the State Board of Education during a panel discussion. State Board Vice President Vic Lenz told the audience, he believes the pieces are in place to make progress on providing more Missouri children with quality early childhood education programs.
We're probably in a better position than we've ever been, than I've ever seen us be in, because I know MSBA has pushed for early childhood forever, and we have been working on it, and now the governor has expressed that this is an important key element. So all the pieces should be in place, and all we have to do is convince the legislature to do something more.
Lenz and other members of the State Board also discussed the process now underway for selecting a permanent Commissioner of Education. He said the State Board will be conducting interviews at the end of this month, and hopes to have a permanent Commissioner named sometime in November. MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall, who moderated the State Board panel discussion, said the Board is now in a solid position to move forward with the selection process after months of turmoil earlier this year.
For the reason the State Board could not function for several months this last year is because we have a state law that requires a minimum of five of the eight State Board members to be in place and to take action in order to function. And so we now have, and we also felt like it was important, even though the governor could appoint the State Board members and he could have filled out all eight positions, Governor Parson, this summer and fall, we felt like it was really important before the decision was made to hire the Commissioner that a minimum of five of those Board members were confirmed. And now we have six confirmed positions.
The MSBA Delegate Assembly met during the annual conference to vote on the association's position statements that form the basis of MSBA's advocacy efforts. Position statements approved by the Delegate Assembly include support of increased state funding for early childhood education programs, support of increasing the motor fuel tax to improve roads and bridges on which our students are transported to and from school every day, and opposition to moving school board elections away from the April election date. One of the highlights of this year's annual conference was a student showcase, where students from school districts throughout the state were on hand to share information about innovative programs in their districts, such as this roller coaster project constructed by students from McDonald County, and a food truck operated by students from the Blue Springs School District. The annual MSBA School Personnel Information Survey is now open. This survey collects information on the wages, salaries, and benefits of teachers and other school employees, so health wards and administrators make fully informed personnel decisions. Member districts that complete the survey and submit their salary schedules and collective bargaining agreements by November 12 receive free access to the data collected. Make sure your district's information is included in this year's database. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meetings, and so long from Columbia.
Any comments? Many of you attended the session, any comments? Anything you really liked?
I thought our session was really good.
Davis was really good.
That's one of the best.
I agree, I thought it was one of the best ones I've had in my two.
It was very good.
I thought it was really, really good.
Teachers did a good job.
They represented you all very well.
Teachers did a good job, Mr. Strong. You just gotta start.
I attended one that I think the name was Bring a Judge to School, or Bring a Judge to Class.
Okay.
And you contract the, I think it's Supreme Court. And they will send a judge to your classroom, teachers can contact them, they'll send a judge to your classroom to answer questions, put on a little, a little whatever and information, and you can also contact them, and they will come to your school and put on a day of court. Takes about a year to set it up and do it, but I thought that was really interesting.
I thought the class and seeing what the other schools were doing on suicide prevention and all that was extremely good. Extremely good.
Good.
And it was good to see that we're going along those same lines with our SOS program and all that that they had in place. So it was really nice to see.
Appreciate you giving up your time to attend, and I think it's, more we all become educated, the better with me.
Next, we'll get into the, the board's spotlights.
Okay, so we have two people, two groups here. Dr. Nash, I'm gonna start with you. You have Mrs. Walker with you, but you can talk a little bit about what she's been doing with some students.
This is Mrs. Walker. This is Mrs. Walker, and she sponsors the Compass Program, which is a ninth grade transition program. And we have that program in place, and we've had it in place in the past, and it was known as Link Crew at that time. This year, she's kind of revamped it a little bit, and what happens is, we select some upper classmen to serve as mentors of an incoming freshman, and then they have worked extremely hard this year on developing lesson plans on how to be successful in high school, good homework habits, study habits, you know, what high school is all about. Later on, I'll be helping with scheduling, and just doing different lesson plans, you know, throughout the year. They are in freshman, Berthold advisories, twice a month, giving these lesson plans, and it's the students who are implementing those. So hats off to Mrs. Walker and her Compass leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Next, we have Mr. Lakey and Mrs. Perkins. They're going to introduce some people that have formed a booster club for FFA, and talk about some of the great things that they have been doing for our students. Come on up.
We'll do a tag team approach to introduce our booster club. Mrs. Perkins has something to carry.
Mr. Lakey and I just wanna kind of brag on our booster club. They approached us about, what, two summers ago? And it was completely their idea, they said, hey, we would like to help you out. We don't even have, the couple that approached us didn't even have kids in high school yet. So, but they just really wanted to help us out, and it's been a big help to help get more people involved, because they've raised so much money that the kids don't even have to bring lunch to eat when they go places anymore. They've taken home trips, scholarships, I can't even like remember the list, and it's not everything. They cook for us when we do some of our activities, they help with banquet, they just put on an ice cream social to give out awards, all kinds of stuff. Help pay for the jackets that the kids have to wear when they go to contests and different things like that, they can get expensive. They just, they've helped us so much, and so many ways.
It's not just a couple people doing it, there's, there's a lot of people trying to, you know, raising money, getting items donated for the auction, just a lot of hard work, a lot of their own personal time and money they've donated to help our kids. So, on behalf of 130-plus FFA members, we want to say thank you, and Dr. Dial approached us about this, and said that we should definitely recognize you all again, so.
So if you would introduce them?
Okay. Tanner and Kerry Clark and family, and Darren and Crystal Alton Xander, and a lot of people have came and bought things, but the people that have been working hard, Becky and, oh gosh, I'm drawing a blank here.
Kathy.
Kathy, I'm sorry Kathy. We went to school together. Kathy. And Gary, Gary was born, and Jan has got involved, and Michelle, so I'm gonna leave someone out, I'm sure. So come on all up for a picture, please.
Well, I just, I went to the, obviously I went to the dinner auction, a big dinner auction, and was astounded by the number of people, the number of businesses that were there, and just the, just the organization that took to have that large of an event in such a small town, and raise the amount of money that you all raised. Phenomenal. We just want to thank you on behalf of the school district. Twenty-four thousand, am I correct? Twenty-three thousand dollars, I think, Kerry?
Yeah, twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
I knew that was close. Remarkable. It filled up the Brandon Chapel Church. It was packed.
They have earmarked four scholarships for this year. Last year, we had two. We have students majoring in ag right now, helped out with the money that these people raised for them. Our kids don't worry about having to have 20 bucks to go on a competition now, they know that that'll be paid for. That's a big encouragement, a big incentive to our kids, because that has been an issue in the past with the kids, because it's, it's an expense to have to go places, but not so much anymore.
Well, as you can see, Tanner and Kerry's kids have a long time ago.
They need to get the garden. Mrs. Perkins, you and Mr. Lakey jump in there.
It's brilliant, really.
Kerry's our president, she started all this.
So I would encourage you next fall, when somebody approaches you about buying a ticket to the FFA banquet, you need to buy one. And you will get bet up on everything you get up. Blame on paying about five times as much as it would cost you to buy it. Margaret Evans and I bet a pie.
She did, I didn't know that was a bet to get them.
Next, we'll go into Principal and Director Reports.
We have to be quiet in here because it is parent-teacher conference tonight, so we do not have Principals, Directors with us, except for Mr. Valentine, who has a report later.
All right, so hold up, I'm just kinda slurring up. We'll go on into Executive Reports, Dr. Dial.
Okay, so I just have a couple things. I really, I don't have any financial information for you, because we, it's before the 20th, we don't have it updated. Finances from the state yet. We do know that the state adequacy target is going up 20 bucks, 20 dollars a kid this month, so it's been 6241, it's held steady since July, and it's going up 6261, which is good. But I do have some concerns moving forward with revenue. Revenue collection seems to be stagnant to down a little bit. They keep, they keep telling us that they still have no concern in getting to the target of 6320, but obviously, I'm glad we're conservative. I don't, I don't believe it will go down from where it's at, I'm just, I'm hesitant to say it'll reach the, reach the end goal of 6320, but financially, we're fine. Our local revenue's good, it's up, state revenue is up from what it was a year ago, I just am hesitant to say that it's gonna hit the projection at this point. So a couple other things, was approached by, by some of you about looking at some bus cameras for our 26 buses, so I, 18 contractor buses, eight district owned buses, so I have pulled some quotes from three different companies. All of these quotes include a stop arm camera, at least two cameras inside, depending on the design of the cameras, inside the bus. Depending on, one quote has two cameras, because it's a fisheye camera, it's actually six cameras in one, and then one with one in the front. The others, the others are three camera systems inside the bus. The quotes are from REI, 247 Security, and Vivotech, which is, some of you talked to that vendor. They actually don't sell direct, they sell through a distributor here, close. Those quotes range right now from 46,000 to 55,000, that does not include install. Depending on the company, install is 300 to 550 a bus. So, we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of 50,000 to 60,000 dollars for that purchase at this point. So, you know, if it's my brothers, I'd get the budget for it, starting July 1. I mean, if that's the direction the board wants to go, I'm fine with that, but I would rather be able to budget for it in the next fiscal year versus this fiscal year, if I, my personal opinion. Go ahead.
I make a motion. I can't?
No. Please be in the gym, I can put it on the internet.
Could you put it on the internet?
I'm just giving you information at this point. Anyway, so the, like I said, it doesn't include the installation, installation's about 70, 800 dollars, depending on the company, could be, could be a little lower, could be a little higher. So, that's all I have, sir.
All right, back to you. Mr. Strong.
Just wanted to update you on a couple items. One, I include some comments from a PD day that we went to Mountain Grove. I'd like to take credit for that, I cannot, Mountain Grove had that organized, and Dr. Dial was superintendent of Mountain Grove, this is about that. It was as well received as any PD activity was ever, I've ever participated in. I include those comments just so you can see them. You know, when you plan those activities, you have such a, yes, it's all teachers in the room, but you've got such a diverse group of needs and people in that room, from preschool age children to 12th grade kids. Speakers dynamic, and you need, you entertain them, while also, you know, covering just fundamental things that apply to any classroom. So that's why I include that, just so you can see that information. I'd like to think we could pull that off every time that it.
We're talking about what next?
So I could run another, Dr. Dial.
We'll see.
Already, kinda looking ahead and trying to see if we can get somebody like that again. But I wanted to update you on that. The other thing I wanted to talk about, we talked a little bit last month, about the state assessments, and where we are. We had some information shared with us, kinda helps me understand a little bit, kinda where we are. So, folks, there is a years-long process where these assessments are developed. So I included this finally. Where we were at the last State Board meeting, we were down to the end for it to be approved, and that's what Dr. Dial was talking to you about. It got to that point, President of the State Board of Education says, we need to go back. And again, we agree, I mean, you know, school employees, we want the teachers to have the majority of the say. So we're back in that process. Now, really what I want to discuss is kinda where we are, and what we're trying to do. So we know scores from assessments last year, we are not getting those the time we thought we might. We were hoping late October, we're hoping now before the first of the year. It may be way before that. But what that process looks like here, I include this just to try to illustrate where the discussion is taking place at. So when those tests are developed, teachers then come back together and go through that assessment, and what they are discussing and trying to identify are these cutoff points. We believe a student in, they're gonna have descriptors in that process identified for the state, all right, students should be able to do this, and we were considering that basic category. If they have a basic understanding of this particular set of skills, this is what they should be able to do. You go beyond that, okay, a student that is proficient in this particular content area, this is what that would look like. And then you go, all right, a student that was able to master this way, that would be once considered the advanced category. That is where the discussion is taking place, and where, where we are in that process. Now, state process, those are the guidelines that have been in place with what we've all accepted five. We're in the middle of discussing the next round of evaluations, what that's gonna look like. Something that's being discussed a lot, and it makes sense to us at school, you know, when you look at the ranges, and you may have kids that improve a ton during the course of the year, which, bottom line, that is our goal, as teachers, educators in the classroom, what we want, we want our students to improve. Well, the way it's currently designed, a student may improve a tremendous amount, and the way the scoring system's set up, it doesn't reflect that way. What they're talking about with this next cycle is we're gonna try to identify students, where they are at the start of the year, where they are by the end of the year, and measuring that growth, and basically acknowledging and recognizing that, and assessing schools that way, which to us makes sense. We pre-test and post-test, you hear our teachers and our principals talk about that. Where's my student at when they first come into my classroom? Where are they at the end of the year? And we want to, that student may cry in progress. You know, we know sometimes students come to us in different places. Are we advancing from where they were? Now, I went through all that, where we are as a district, we're not just sitting waiting for those festivals to come back from the state. When you hear us talk about benchmarking, when you hear us talk about common assessments, our teachers, our principals, that's something they're already talking about and trying to do. Where are our kiddos at? You know, what things are they really good at? What things do we need to help them with? And how can we get them further, and measure where they are by the end of the year? So that's something you hear our principals and teachers talking about this year. You stop by, go through the hallways, you're gonna see classroom goals outside a lot of those classrooms. I know we hear a lot in education, individualized instruction. I know when I first heard that, I was picturing a student sitting in a cubicle looking at a computer. That's not what that is. We're talking about individualized instruction, we're talking about helping students see where they are, and helping to see the progress that they're making throughout the course of the year. So that's something you'll hear our teachers and principals talking about a lot. So that's what we're doing. Yes, we're waiting on those scores, we're gonna update you on that information as we get it. No, but our principals and teachers, they're, and our kids, they're plugging away, trying to make progress with where they're at and where they want to be. Hopefully that, that makes sense, kind of where the state is, and what we're doing. Questions on any of that?
Thank you.
Could, can we back up and talk about these cameras a bit?
Can, yes, sir.
Could we, before we make a decision to spend a lot of money, could we maybe get some, find a district that uses them?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, and I'm not talking a district that's all favorable, something similar or ours, you know, sometimes in the past, you know, there's been money spent, and too much down the road, it didn't work very well.
So that's where I got these, two of these companies, where I called some neighboring districts to get, who do you use?
Okay.
So that's what I'm trying to do, but part of that big process, and I, and I didn't need to cut you off, I don't have a, I don't have a firm number, 'cause I don't have a firm install number, I have ranges, I wouldn't have a firm number to recommend for approval tonight for you. I've been playing phone tag with some of them, and some of them are just slowly getting back to me, to be honest with you, but yeah, I mean, that would be, I would wanna check references on all of those, those three companies before I ever made a recommendation to you, with people that are actually using their equipment.
Yeah, it would be good.
I can bring that information back.
The one that Troy and I talked to, they were, they would be able to give you a lot of references. Remember Troy, they talked.
They did, at this point, well, at this point, I will tell you, I don't have a hard number back from them, but when I showed them what my range was, he said I'm gonna be way higher. So I, but I don't have a number from them.
Now, one thing that that company did have is a very good warranty.
Yeah.
And if we had an issue with one being bad, they could just mail us one and flip it out real quick.
That would be, I think the warranty on the DVR is pretty much the same on all three.
It's five years.
Uh, one is 10.
Okay.
Yeah, one of them's a 10-year warranty, I don't know which one was.
And the service plan was really, like Troy said, it's really good.
So I have some more, I just don't have enough, wouldn't have enough to make a recommendation today.
That's fine, just as long as we don't drop it.
Yeah, or not.
That's great.
Okay. Next, we'll go into our action items. We start off with facilities and grounds, program.
Mr. Valentine.
I've got my own report, featuring some of the projects that we did over the summer. Currently working on some new projects, some cement, we made a new lorry belt for storage and loading the buses. We're already planning on some stuff next summer, soon as school's out, and I'm struggling with safety and maintenance in this one.
We're, Mr. Valentine and I are currently working on trying to get some solicit. We have materials bids to build the building, trying to get, trying to find a concrete guy. Struggling to find some concrete man that wants to work. I mean, so if you have any suggestions, send me their name, because we're happy to call I mean, so if you have any suggestions, send me their name, because we're happy to call them. Because we can get dirt people to show up, but we need a concrete guy to tell us what he, what he really wants, needs for the footings. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, so if you know of one, send us a name, because we've called everybody we know.
We thought we'd flatwork for the shop.
Yeah, we may need some short walls, but flatwork for sure.
Jeremiah takes too busy.
Jeremiah won't show up at this point. He's busy. We're going to keep handling, we're going to, we're going to get one, we're going to get a number in person. Our numbers on the building itself are good.
And the students, we filled them.
They'll, we're going to, well, we don't actually have a, the construction class didn't make, so we're going to use them where we can. I'm at a raise class, but our maintenance group will do a lot of the work, and we'll use students where we can use them. But the construction class didn't have enough numbers.
So they could go during school year.
Yeah, that's the plan.
The construction class didn't have enough numbers.
Didn't have enough kids. We only had three kids sign up for it, so we're going to try a different, we're going to try a different approach next fall. Auto mechanics had a huge number, but construction didn't have enough. Auto mechanics was a huge number.
So we need a motion approval of the facility and grounds program review as presented. Mark makes a motion of a second. Troy seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor carries a six oh. Next, approval of early childhood, childhood program review.
Dr. Robson tried to make it, didn't get hung up, but he called out an early childhood program review for you and was submitted. Any questions that maybe I can answer? If you remember, we have expanded both of those preschools. We're up to sixteen and in both full-day programs and ten in one half a day. And so we have twenty kids in the other half a day. We had some discussions about expanding them a little farther next year to twenty and twenty, and maybe possibly fifteen and fifteen. We had licensing come down and look at our half-day preschool yesterday to tell us what we need to do to bring it up, to be able to expand it to some more kids.
So we need a motion approve, motion approval for early childhood program review. Mark makes a motion. Mark seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor carries a six oh. Next, we'll have Transpar.
So I was asked to, a couple months ago, was asked to look at some different companies that could do a audit of sorts on our transportation system. Really, Transpar in the Midwest is, is the company that has probably has the most expertise. It's an independent transportation company. They, they provide routing help, they provide review of your transportation system, they provide transportation. Another, a division of their company does that as well. So after lots of conversation with them, really the, for them to come down and really do an audit of our district with similar size and demographics to us and us, of us, sorry, to look for efficiencies. And if we were really on target with our costs, then that price is going to be about $5,000 in order to do that. My recommendation at this point, I really feel like, I don't think we're overspending on transportation. I don't know that we're underspending on transportation. I feel like we're kind of in that sweet spot. It, it runs pretty smoothly. I don't think we can be more efficient. We cannot cut any routes at all. I do not believe that. Our buses are full in the mornings, full in the afternoons. I am happy to make that happen. I just don't know that it's a good use of $5,000 in my opinion at this point, but if the, I think our transportation system operates pretty smoothly, the way it's set. But I'm happy to do whatever the board wishes to do. Yeah, well, yeah. I'd like to have. I would, I would like, I mean, unless you tell me to go ahead and do it, I'd like to have a report.
So I'd like to make a motion to hire them to look at where we're at, see if we are under, see if we're over, and to see if there's something we can do to save some money.
Okay.
There's been perception in the community that, from a lot of people, that we're spending too much. I'd like to see where we're at. So I make a motion to hire them to.
So we have a motion, motion on the table to hire Transpar to do an audit of our transportation system. Do I have a second?
I seconded.
Second, discussion.
What was the cost on that again?
$5,000. It's a down, I mean, they, they originally shot me seventy-two hundred. And do I think it's, I don't think it's money wasted. That's not what I'm going to say. I don't think it's over. I don't think the cost is exorbitant either for these type of people.
Have you looked into this yourself?
Yes, I.
Have you looked into it? And you think where we're at is operating, like you said, is.
I do not believe that we are overspending on transportation. That's what I'll tell you. I don't think that, I don't think we're way at the bottom. I think we're in the middle, based on my experience. And efficiency-wise, our routes are as about efficient as we can possibly get them.
I haven't seen any spending $5,000.
But that's, again, I don't, I don't think it's overrated.
Well, you've had a lot of questions back over the past about where we're at. And you actually have said many times that you believe they're getting overpaid. So why don't we look, why don't we look into it?
I don't think it's a waste of money. I mean, we've been here before, I don't want to, not going there again. It's my opinion. I just don't, I mean, I'm going to take the direction of our superintendent. I'm not interested in dividing our community any further or doing that again. I mean, that's my opinion. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opening that can of worms up. You know, we hired Dr. Dial, he came in here and would be our superintendent, and he's given, given us a recommendation. And I feel like he's given good reason, good explanation, and I just don't see any point. And, and a lot of it goes to is, is our history. You know, a lot of this stuff I can't say because it's been in closed session, and I'm not going to go there. But I just don't think that anything that comes out of a report will be taken seriously. So my, my opinion is I don't want to waste the school's money to, to get into it, so.
So you don't think the independent report will be accurate?
It may be accurate, but, uh, I, I don't think that, I mean, we've had other, other folks. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to get into it because.
You don't think it's going to change anybody's mind?
I don't think it's going to change anybody's mind. I don't think that, I just don't think it's worth going there. I mean, $5,000 is a lot of money. Superintendent Sutton here telling me that it's not wise to spend, that you're doing a good job. But I don't know why we'd give him.
We've saved way over $5,000 not giving them two raises in four years.
And there's a chance that the Transpar will show that that is the case, that our bus drivers are underpaid. Okay? And there's this perception, Michael himself has brought it up in the short period of time I've been on the board, that they're overpaid. Maybe the truth needs to come out, okay? We're right on target. Maybe that's it. We pay them the way it's supposed to be done. But the perception in the community, because of things that have been said in the past, is that we over, they're overpaid. I believe they deserve, you know, it to be settled once and for all. And I believe that doing this, that will do that. Because they're going to, they're going to tell us, because these people haven't gotten a raise. Again, I understand in the past, they didn't get one either. Okay? So I believe that there's a chance that it will be settled once and for all, and we can put it to rest.
There was not two years in a row last year in this.
Not two in a row, it was two years and four years. Twice in four years.
I thought you said twice.
As far as a can of worms goes, if you, if you didn't pay the teachers two years and four years, and pay everybody else a raise, you'd see a can of worms like. You mug this can of worms.
Well, I think. The bus driver got a raise here, the bus driver got a raise last year, but it was reduced, didn't love it much to the teachers. And everybody else got.
Four, four years ago.
Yeah, I was going to say, and that, that perception was, was a little different too though. It, it was the same percentage on the base.
The year before we came in, they.
Their salary is based on mileage and base. They got the same raise on the base, but the mileage was cut down. It was less than half where everybody else got.
On the mileage?
Yeah.
Base rate was the same percentage, and mileage was not the same percentage.
Mileage was less than half where everybody else got, percentage-wise.
I feel that Dr. Dial is correct in the fact that he's saying we have a great transportation system. We do. I think our guys and women are fabulous. They take care of the kids. They, you know, they, they also run rough roads, you know? And they work late hours sometimes, making sure those kids are home. But they have not gotten a raise twice in the last four years. And the perception in the community is that they're overpaid. So let's find out. Let's let the community know, one way or another, and let it be settled.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table to hire Transpar to do a transportation audit. All those in favor? Three, four, those against? Three against, motion opposed. Next, we'll go into approval of the MSBA 2018 C policy update.
So we have one new policy and one revision of policy. So the new policy is policy IGCE. It's based on Senate Bill 603 and House Bill 1606. So those were two new bills in the legislature last spring. And this really creates a Missouri Course Access or MOCAPS program, which replaces the old MOVIP program, which is an online course access through the state of Missouri. So when MOVIP first started, kids could take online courses and the state paid for it. That quickly went away, and it was a self-paid program. So that is, so that has changed again, and that is a big, the governor is big on Course Access, which I think we all are. But it really creates, much like we have, currently have with our Launch program, and our partnership with SPS and about twenty-seven other school districts. But this will allow students in the high school to take a virtual course, so an online course, through a, through a MOCAPS provider. So they have to be approved by the state of Missouri. Interestingly, as of last week, University of Missouri was the only approved MOCAPS provider in September. As of last week, there's no approved MOCAPS providers. Desi's trying to figure this out as it goes. Launch is a preferred provider, but they are not a designated provider at this point. So, anyway, Desi has to approve the course. It is at district expense, so a student that is enrolled in our school district and has been enrolled at least one semester prior can choose to take a MOCAP course. And we get to count their attendance, but the, but the course fee is at the district expense. So it is, it's something that we are planning for. There's an enrollment process. We met again today. We really are looking at, nobody has started this yet because Desi doesn't have the framework set up. So we're probably looking at next fall, depending on how quickly something happens. But we had forty-eight kids in Launch this summer. Forty-six of them were successful. So it's something that we do do. We have kids in Launch right now because they need to make up a different, they need a class that we didn't have. So we're okay with it. We just have to work out the twists and the turns of how to accomplish it moving forward. So, policy IGCE is a current policy. There's just, there's quite a bit of cleanup language in that in order to comply with Senate Bill 603 and House Bill 1606. It's, it's not anything that is a huge change for us. Has some dual enrollment ramifications. We have kids taking class through Drury right now in dual enrollment. And how that's going to shake out, I'm a little, that, that bill says the district will pay for that dual enrollment. And that's what it says. Currently, our students pay for that. I think there's, I think there's going to be a little more shakeup in that and what that looks like. But these two policies do need to be adopted. They both are critical to the state law at this point. So any questions that I can answer?
Next, we need to approve MSBA, MSBA 2018 C policy updates as Dr. Dial is presenting. Do I have a motion? Mark makes the motion, do I have a second? Michael seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor carries a six oh. That concludes our agenda items tonight. Our next regular board meeting will be November fifteenth, 2018, at six thirty in this boardroom. Need a motion to adjourn. Michael makes a motion, do I have a second? Mark seconds, all in favor? Carries a six oh.
Daddy had.
Your biggest one of all. So, so, so we, so we, I don't mind, I don't care. I don't care who you bring in. I want, I want this system to. I want them to be able to look at our system right now. You don't just want to know about this, that company right over there. That's all they do. That is all they do. This company evaluates, that's what they do independently. It'll work for no body. It'll work for you, then it will still work for them. $5,000, you guys have saved twenty, fifty thousand. Because, because it's, it's not going to go, it's not going to go if you have to raise this. So, so are they overpaid? So you don't get raises? And that was, and that was disguised as daily. What do you have to do? This first, six months. Six months going quiet, don't be quiet. You know all about that. If it's been repaired, just play the property on the other side.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like we did, and had a tiny haircut. It doesn't matter. Gets fixed, it gets fixed, the clothing business, then it might be on it until that is fixed. That first inspection, they don't, they don't let them haul any kids until the second inspection, everything's going to be fixed. Everything.
No, 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 I mean, no.
For the year, you guys have paid the rates. So, so do we, do we give, do we give, do we not give more teachers a raise? So, so do we, do we give, do we give, do we not give the teachers a raise? What do we give the race, what do we give the race to teachers?
Do we go on year over?
What do we go on, why do we get into? Was, was laid out, but it's assured as daily performance.
Well, that was...
And that has nothing to do with yearly performance. They all, they have, these guys have on Dogwood. And they, I, real teeny weeny rants on Dogwood.
Who knows? Tanner. Tanner, Tanner. California, by, by...
What? Paper?
Paper.
Paper on four?
The tire was arranged, I mean, this guy.
And we talked about exhaust tanks, that is, it's a little plastic thing. That was his first thing. Don't talk to me like I don't know about it, I own an all English repair shop. And don't you laugh at me. Do you have any training since I've been on here?
Yeah, no, yeah, this position, we, we...
Unless we start treating them with respect.
Then why does he treat me with any respect?
Because you don't treat us either. I mean, you treat respectful of us, you don't call him a name, you don't call any of us a name. If you wanna be treated with respect.
We need respect.
I will write pictures back.
I'll bet you will.
What are you gonna do, tear it apart? Or did you get it on film? Did you get it on film?
As far as I can tell, it's a... But I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm for sure it's wrong.
Yeah, we thought they should pay more, we thought we had more.
But I don't think what's, 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 if you want to arrive at this base, you... But, but this isn't, but I got more, we sell this.
Well, yeah.
They're gone. I, I, I wrote that paper now.
There's something to be said for that, yeah, that's probably, that's probably...
I know my boss told me.
His last, our, our...
I know, I know, it's the issue.
I won't get by at all. I won't play. I won't be with this girl.
I'm a support, she can speak until now.
I think that...
I have, I got a real son in danger.
I'm sure I'm gonna get all ready to bed, I think.
I did not know that.
I talked to, they'll tell us.
It's how bad it is. Appreciate it, thank you.
It's all, it could be out for me, you know? What's the national score?
This is sugar fruit? Yeah, sure. Here, here, take a little, take a... Yeah, I think that's, it's under. The end, it smells good. Operating, he deserves it. How did that happen?
So it just fails automatically, like you're supposed to be...
She made them, she made, she made me, her car, she got me. It would be...
Did you really? Wow. I just know that that happened.
And you know, I had their bill, so you can see more red. It is, it is. But then, you know, you know, it's... We know the second time, we can't make more than that, we send more workers, not personally, but the policy was in general. So, I wonder if they're gonna go four, one, seven, three. Better than just find a solution to that, fix it. Great fish, great fish, four, one, seven, ranch. But that's, that's the wrong part, if they don't get a pass at that step. Because every, every choice is always coming from the first. It's, it's built out to... You should have more than this, this, that, this, that, this, that. Now, really, you have no idea, it's not, but it's hyper appreciated.
You don't like those mail addresses?
I appreciate it, I can't. I don't get it, I think it's... And versus, just like me, I had, you said, this, but come out, like a little one. You know, it's, they don't appreciate it, they...
That was just my personal feeling.
I, I can't say, this morning, these thoughts right here, I said, no, I stopped, they get lost, they're all down there. I said, I don't want them to ride, they get busy. I see it all first time. It's like the reason for not getting the whole race, the whole year. I love the quiz, you don't regret it.